Welcome to the zoning board of appeals Scarborough, November 9th, 2016. Could we have a vote?
Ms. Shoup?
Here.
Mr. Blaze?
Here.
Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Stark?
Here.
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Okay, we've got members of voting groups who also were on. Just, oh, pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing is, have you got a letter from, a letter first, okay.
Yes.
I have a motion for approval of the minutes for October 12th, 2016.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? If you're in your own favor? Jim?
Thank you.
And we've got a request for, I'll read it in quickly. This is from the Haskell's. Right on behalf of my husband, David Haskell, and Sister Sarah Douglas, we made a presentation in their September meeting on nine shipwreck. We'd like to postpone the next, the schedule on December 14th meeting to allow us time to properly complete our revised submission. And so, if anybody has no problem with that, we'll put that on the agenda for the December 14th meeting. Is that what we can do? Okay, fine, we'll do that. Okay, great. And I'm going to start right, we only have two appeals tonight. Appeal number 2591, it's a practical difficulty variance requested by Abigail Kane, One Hillside Avenue, parcel, this is map U27, parcel 74, and do we have representatives? Give me the microphone, state your name and address, and we'll go from there.
My name is Jeff Quirk, 123 Oakwood Point Road, Scarborough, and I'm here to work with Abigail on her appeal. Thanks for hearing us tonight. Abigail's situation is that she grew up in the house. We were actually neighbors. I lived on Hillside as well as a kid. And she inherited the house a couple of years ago. Her mom and dad have passed. And she does a lot of volunteer work with elderly people, and she is very aware of the aging process. When her dad first got sick, she was in a position that she couldn't bring him home because the house wasn't set up to be accessible for a wheelchair. And it's a typical 1960 ranch, a real tiny kitchen and small entryways. And what she's asking the board for is an opportunity to, as you can see on the plan, to make the back of the house accessible from the driveway. It's no room for a garage, so her wish is that she'd be able to drive into the driveway, currently have a set of stairs, and when the need arises, replace the stairs with a ramp, and give her good access to the back of the house. The way the land lays out is it kind of slopes pretty drastically from the foundation to the Pine Point Road. And with the handicap accessible part, she'd like to put a mudroom on the back. Again, 1960s ranch with no closets and no space, she'd like to have an area for coats and that type of stuff. On the drawing that you just saw on the layout, it didn't fully show that in the very front, we'd be seeking for three feet as well to connect the existing stairs that were there with the ramp that would allow us, or the piece of decking that would allow us to get to the back. So that was one of the questions. So we would ask for three feet by eight feet in the very front. It's currently, the building is 42 and a half feet from Hillside Avenue, so we'd like to reduce that just to connect the existing stairs with the new piece of decking that would allow access to the back of the house as well. The overhangs are, on the roof line, are incorporated within the setback that we're asking for the reduction. So there was a, on the, yeah, thank you, that part right there, that, the overhang is included in the overall reduction as well.
Does that extend past the railing, or is it straight with it?
It's just going to be the rake trim beyond that, so it'll be six inches just beyond that. But that's in, within what we're asking for, that's incorporated. It's not going to be a drastic overhang, just be a rake trim with a shadow board.
Any other issues?
No, that's, it pretty much entails it.
Actually, Mr. Quirk addressed, Mr. Quirk addressed the two concerns that I had, which I put in my staff comments, and it was just sort of something that I discovered as I was reviewing the information. It wasn't clear to me whether or not it would require a little bit of relief on the front in order to connect.
Yeah, exactly.
And I didn't know for sure if the roof projection was going to be within the requested setback or not. So he's clarified those two points. I think everything else, as he described it, is pretty, pretty clear. The structure did receive a variance some years ago for the little bump out, kitchen bump out that you see in this view here. And then I believe the intent is to extend that roof right on over.
Yeah, and that was just to keep the snow and the ice off. That part gets pretty heavily covered.
And she has two front setbacks as part of the problem, right?
Well, actu-
Yeah, because of the corner lot.
Yeah, that's the, that's the bugger on that, that corner lot, which obviously is on the Pine Point roadside, and there's a pretty good tree barrier there now. Of course, we wouldn't get into any of that.
Brian, would this fall under the ADA at all?
Not at this point, because they're not actually installing a ramp.
Okay. A couple of quick questions before I throw it over to the board. Thirty-six inches, normally it's 42 for handicaps. Is there any reason why you want to stick to 36, or is-
Just, we just didn't want to go too far with the variant. I mean, of course, we'd like to go wider, but we're just trying to be as reasonable as we can. We measured kind of with what we could get through with a wheelchair, and that was like the bare minimum.
The only reason I bring that up, and I don't know how that affects things, I don't know, that's because of Miss Monks, but to me, if we're following, if this is designed to meet the ADA regulations, we might as well meet the ADA regulations, which is 42 inches.
If it's a single-family dwelling, it's not required to meet ADA.
Are you thinking of-
Thirty-six is wide enough.
Is it wide enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go through the requirements of practical difficulty, and then we'll come to the board's questions. I'll just speed it in a little bit.
Okay, thanks.
The needs of the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
You can read it, I read it.
All right.
And we just put, yeah, that's okay. It's a nice one.
Yes, and this is Abigail, I'm just reading for her, but she states, she's seeking a variance on the Pine Point roadside of my house, which has a heavily wooded tree buffer along proposed variance size. The side of the variance that she's asking for is a strip four feet wide by 24 inches long, by 24 feet. Because her father added the bump out on the kitchen in the 1980s, the reduction requested is 12 foot nine on the back sideline of the Pine Point roadside and 15 two on the front sideline of the Pine Point road. Again, the purpose of the variance is to make the home handicap accessible for her future. Her parents bought the house in 1960. She spent most of her childhood there. Obviously, both of her parents have passed. I guess that kind of summarizes that answer.
Thank you. The granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the fair market value of abiding properties of the neighborhood.
No, we don't believe at all. It will enhance the property, and it will bring it way more into compliance than it currently is now. And with this renovation, she'd like to do a roof and other stuff as well, needs to be updated. So it would certainly not decrease anybody's property value.
And practical difficulty is not the result in action taken by the applicant or prior owner?
No, yes.
No other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance?
We looked at a lot of different ways, Mark, and to get to the back of the house, this is the only real feasible way that would really work.
And the reason for the back of the house versus the front of the house is?
Again, it's a 1960s ranch, and as you come into the house, it comes right into a bottleneck. The back is way more open, and the way the kitchen's laid out, if we went through the front, it would basically have to rearrange the entire kitchen, which was fairly new, so.
I'm assuming that you don't have a six, you probably don't have a six-foot circle in there.
Not at all.
Okay. But that, to me, we're dealing with this similar in my family and in my office, so I'm pretty concerned about whether or not it's legal or not. To me, it's important.
Yeah.
So many people need it. No, let's see, the granted variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties?
Yeah, again, just as far as accessibility, for sure.
And it's not an unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment?
No, not at all, no.
And you're not in flood zone?
No.
Flood hasn't, okay. And anything else you would say? Want to open up the board for questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. The reason why you're not putting the ramp in immediately is just because it's not needed immediately?
Right, and she does do a lot with elderly, and we may have an option later on if she's bringing people home. She does a lot of therapy stuff with elderly, and if we find that she's bringing people home to the house to enjoy a day in the sun, then we'll install the ramp instead of the stairs. But right now, obviously, she doesn't need the ramp.
Is that, from a timing point of view, if we approve it, and there's only stairs, but say two years from now she needs to put a ramp in, will this approval allow her to do that without having to come back?
State statute allows a disability variance to be granted by a code enforcement officer, so it doesn't even have to come to the board if she needs to put a ramp in.
That was kind of, I think, Mr. Stark's question earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, good. That's good to hear. So you're setting yourself up to be able to do it, but-
In the future, yeah.
-of course, they can deal with it without us.
Perfect.
Okay. Other questions, comments from the board?
I want to clarify, I mean, she can't put the ramp in until you have an actual disability documented. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's criteria with the state statute.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to understand that.
Any other questions? I just want to comment, thank you for taking care of people like that. It's a big difference. We've had numerous people in my family in wheelchairs, so I understand it very well. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Look to approve as requested.
Second.
I would, I would just, I want to make sure that you go back and do your findings and conclusions as part of the decision-making process.
Thank you. So let's go right through the items again, like we would normally do. This is, when they get cut and dry like this, they kind of forget the technical side. Let me do this. The needs of the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. I'll speak for the board, and if they want to add something, otherwise, I speed up a bit here. Obviously, it's, the property's got two side setbacks that are, I'm sure, front setbacks, and that's most of the problem, not all of it. Anybody want to add anything to that? Is there anything?
I guess it's pretty good, yeah.
I'll figure that being met. Okay. The granted variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonable detrimental effect on either use of the fair market value of abiding properties. It's a-
It appears to me that they're going to upgrade other areas of the house as well, so it's actually going to make it a little bit nicer for the neighborhood.
Be an improvement. And any other discussion on that? Am I in favor of that being met? That's unanimous. The practical difficulty is not the result in action taken by the applicant or prior owner. I guess as long as you don't trip intentionally, I guess that meets that requirement. Anybody have any problem with that? Am I in favor of that being met? The granted variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. It actually really doesn't fit perfectly in any category, but from a practical point of view, as the community gets older, we're going to see more of these. Does anybody have any questions on that, or to add to that? Am I in favor of that being met? The granted variance will not have an unreasonable effect on the natural environment.
I see very little disturbance there.
If you're in your own favor?
Did we skip over no feasible alternative?
Yes, I did, thank you. No other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance, and based on the circumstances, as I see it, and we mentioned the question about whether they come in the front door, and you really, the six feet is an exaggeration, you need six feet to turn a wheelchair, and there was any reasonability. And if that's not there, you're talking about a major change. So that's just stating on the record. To me, there isn't any future. I'll also add to that note in the application here that the best accessibility and most architecturally pleasing is from the rear of the building, and also ties in with the, let's see, number two, as far as detrimental effect on the property, putting everything behind the house, you know, having everything in front of the house. So that's good.
Yeah. Mr. Longstaff, I always have questions on this one, I apologize. No feasible alternative, we're looking at this for doing this, what they're looking to do, not in the fact of no feasible alternative would be that they could not do it, correct?
Right, the interpretation that we've applied to this in the past, to stay consistent, is that it is a permitted use in the district, what they're, you know, proposing to do. It's a permitted use in the district. It's simply that they can't do it without need of a variance in order to combat the two burdens on the lot with having the two frontages. So, in other words, if you didn't have that burden, you would be able to maintain a 15-foot side setback where Pine Point Road is, and you could easily do this without a variance. It's a permitted use in the zone, they're not looking to put up a four-story tower or anything like that. It's something that could be permitted but can't be but for the fact that they need the variance. So the feasible alternative gets to how can you do what they're proposing to do without a variance?
Okay, thank you.
That's awesome. Anybody wish to add to that? If you're in favor of that being met? Thank you. And then, good job, thank you. And you and Leroy. I take my glasses off, I lose my spot. The property is not located in a whole apart of the Strolland area, it's not in the Strolland zone, so that doesn't apply. Okay, so you want me to come back to, I think we have a-
Mr. Stark had a motion.
Oh, before, before we do that, just one quick thing. I know Ms. Shoup had a question on the ramp, and I know you understand that you just can't do that, you need to come-
Oh, absolutely.
-have to have a reason.
Yeah, no, yeah, thank you, yeah, we're, yeah.
As far as I understand it, just for the record, that reason is pretty, pretty, it's like she was bringing people over, that would be another reason, I believe, is that accurate?
I'm not sure, because I don't have the statute in front of me. I just know that there is state statute that allows, for good reason, for reasons that are stated in the statute, for us to be able to do that. If there was a request to do it, and it didn't meet those criteria, then they'd probably have to come to the board for another variance to do that.
Is there any logic in putting it in now, or?
They don't have, you can't really, it's hard to do because it's not proposed on the plan, we don't know where it would be located, it's kind of hard to redraw it on the slide, so I think we'll just, I think it's better to cross.
Yeah, I'd be pretty happy with that. And we did discuss that if she started bringing people home, I could do a removable ramp that could, I could actually clip on right over the stairs as need be, and then just remove it, so.
That's what we do.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, that was one of the thoughts that we had.
Great.
I just had one other comment, Lieutenant Chairman. I think we need to also discuss the practical difficulty definition.
So in the dimensional standards, those provisions of the ordinance which relate to a lot area, lot coverage, frontage, and setback, including the buffer requirements, and then the practical difficulty, a case where a strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which the variance is sought, would both preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone, which you've already answered for us, thank you, and which is located, and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant. And I appreciate you bringing it up for obvious reasons. So, as far as I see it, remodeling a kitchen available at that six, for anybody that doesn't know, they use a six-foot radius.
Actually, six feet.
Five feet. I'm sorry, five feet, thank you. It's a circle that they need to flow with in the wheelchair. And if you don't have that, if it's smaller than that, it can be smaller, but it's not easy.
Yeah.
And so, it would cost to move kitchens, it's not expensive, you're talking plumbing, electrical, counters, or anything else, that's not cheap. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to that as far as the economic injury? I think Ms. Monks stepped perfectly that it's permitted in the zone, and so, would I hear some comments on that.
No, I think that they, that that was addressed when he said that they did look at alternative options on this, and that that was the reason that they didn't use the front option.
So go back to the motion of this, if you could just restate the motion for him.
Yeah, look to approve as presented.
Second. Any discussion on the, am I in your own favor? by Thomas Roach, 40 Morning Street, this is map U2, parcel 43. That's him.
Thank you very much.
I see you.
See you in hockey.
Okay.
Okay. And good to see you.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Chairman, my name is Nancy St. Clair, I'm with St. Clair Associates. I'm here tonight with Thomas Roach, and we'd like to talk to you folks about a request for a practical difficulty variance for his property at 40 Morning Street, which is in the Higgins Beach area of Scarborough. So this property has some history, and if you have read through the 12 pages of narratives that I provided for you, you'll know a little bit about the background on that. But I just want to hit some of the highlights as part of that for our discussion tonight. So this piece of property is a corner lot. In 1989, Mr. Roach's grandfather was before you folks to seek a variance in order to be able to build on this lot. It was a grandfathered non-conforming lot of record at the time, and due to the setbacks at the time, the building window on the lot would have been roughly about five feet by about 55 feet. So as part of the review process that went on at that time, there was a variance that was granted. It's partly because of the size of the lot, but also the location of the lot, and that it is a corner lot. So at the time, the property located on the corner of Greenwood and Morning Street had a 30-foot setback from both Greenwood and Morning Street. So we had quite a bit of setbacks on the fact that it was a corner lot. So as part of that 1989 variance, there was an allowance to be able to build a home on the property and impact the setback along Greenwood, and also along this side of the property as well. So that side yard setback, which had been 15, was reduced down to 10. The front yard setback, I believe, was reduced down to about 16 in order to be able to construct the home. Part of the discussion during the board of appeals review at that time was the placement of the home on the lot in the context to the fact that at that time, that reduction- of the home on the lot in the context to the fact that at that time, that reduction on that side yard setback would put the home closer to the existing house on the adjacent property. So one of the solutions for that at the time was to actually set this house back further on the lot. At that time, the setback off of Morning Street was thirty feet, well in excess of thirty feet now with the construction of the home at that time in nineteen ninety. So at the time, the house had a variance that allowed construction within the setback off Greenwood, and the setback off the side here of the property as well. The house was situated purposely on this side of the lot honoring a fifteen-foot setback that was appropriate at the time, leaving a better separation distance between the house and the existing home that was here. If you look at an aerial photo, and I don't know, Brian, if you do have access to the aerial photos-
Unless you provided one, I-
I did not, and I do apologize for that.
I can probably get to one, but-
If you are familiar with that particular area, you'll recall that most of the homes, especially along Morning Street, sit relatively close to the road. So in two thousand and fifteen, when the new zoning took effect in this area, and we're in the coastal residential one zone now, what happened was, most of the homes in that area actually sit closer to the road and have a larger rear yard. So the new setback requirements that took effect in two thousand and fifteen now have both a minimum and a maximum. Being a corner lot, we're also dealing with a primary front yard, which is off Morning Street, and a secondary front yard off of Greenwood. So what we're dealing with is, off Morning, we have an eighteen-foot minimum, we have a twenty-one-foot maximum. Right now, the house is sited approximately between fifty-three and fifty-five feet from Morning Street. So we're well in excess of the maximum allowable under the new zoning. In addition, we're dealing with, as most of the lots in that area have a large rear yard, the new zoning sets forth a thirty-foot rear yard setback. So along this edge, where we are fifteen feet from the property line, that is now a thirty-foot rear yard setback. So the house, half the house, is in that setback already. So we are in a situation where, in nineteen eighty-nine, when the first variances were granted, we were addressing accommodating setbacks on both of these sides of the property. And in order to address that, the house was sited on this side of the lot, further away from Morning Street. If you look at the photos on the aerial, you'll see that the majority of the homes along Morning Street do sit pretty close to the road, and this one actually sits quite a ways back. So we're dealing with a situation, if you look at it right there, there's the house. So that's the house sitting sort of further back, and you can see all these that belong up at the front yard here.
If I could, I would have. Don't be so critical. You got what you got.
Can you click on that one particular parcel?
I can't. It doesn't do anything.
Okay.
If I had the internal GIS that I use, which is far superior to what I've got on the screen, I could, but I can't do that.
Right, okay.
This is a guess. Yeah. That's right.
So we start with an existing corner lot that, up until two thousand and fifteen, we had a house that was situated with appropriate variances in the setback off of Greenwood and the setback off the side yard. With the changes that happened in two thousand and fifteen with the new zoning, we are now, we would no longer need any variance because that fifteen-foot setback along the side is now actually only eight feet with the current zoning. So we're good. The same on Greenwood, we have, again, that varying minimum to maximum, which is twelve to twenty-one feet, we're about sixteen feet. So again, we're good. The problem is, now on the other two sides. So what we have now is a situation where the existing house sits roughly halfway in that thirty-foot rear setback along the side, and we're much further away than the maximum that will be allowed for the front yard setback for the property. What the applicants are proposing to do with their home is to actually lift it up, it is sitting on a cross wall with a crawl space. What we'd like to be able to do is raise the house up by about four feet, so that that is a full-height basement underneath the home. There was ledge that was encountered as part of the construction of the home originally, so that's why there was a crawl space that was put in there at that time. As part of those renovations as well, this lighter area that you see, which is roughly twelve feet by twenty-two feet, is a proposed addition which would provide a sunroom and a deck above for that expansion on the, what would be the Morning Street side. So with the proposal, we're actually getting the house closer to conformity with the separation distance of maximum off of Morning Street, but we can't meet that maximum of twenty-one feet off of Morning Street. If we were to do that, we'd end up with a house that'd be about sixty-three feet long. So what we're proposing to do tonight is to seek a review by you folks for a practical difficulty variance to allow the house to be elevated by four feet, so it sits in its normal original position. But because it's fifteen feet in that rear yard setback, we do need to have a practical difficulty variance on that component. In addition, we need to have a variance in order to allow us to expand towards Morning Street, making it more conforming than what it is currently. But under the criteria under the new zoning, additions are permitted in the side and the rear of a house, but the front expansion is not specifically allowed. So I wanted to talk to you folks about that and sort of the variance review process as well. So there is quite a bit of history on the lot, as I've described. We're proposing to do what we feel is relatively straightforward and simple in order to be able to allow the applicant to retire to this home, live there permanently. This property has been in their family for decades and generations. And this started off as a lot that was rented for tenting back in the history of Higgins Beach. And as the family continued to summer there, every summer they actually purchased the lot, and then, that was purchased, I believe, in nineteen twenty-two. And then, as I mentioned, in nineteen eighty-nine, there was a variance, and nineteen ninety, the house was built. So this will allow the third generation, third-plus generation, to actually live on the property, something that their family started a number of years ago. So with that, we certainly do have a lot of information in the packet, we'd certainly be willing to discuss anything with you, and do understand that there's a lot of information to be provided and a lot to be read. So, thank you.
Let me start with, not from this one, but I think this one would do what the town sees.
Yes, as I, as I put in my, thank you, Mr. Chairman, as I put in my staff comments, which you should have all received, it, on the outside, seems like a simple request, but there are a lot of layers and a lot of, a lot of complexities to it that were not necessarily anyone's fault, not, certainly not the owners, but it's interesting to hear about the requirement, I didn't read all of the minutes for the prior appeal that was granted for the construction of the building, but it seems they actually did you a disservice by making you put it so far back on the lot. It would have been more in keeping with all of the rest of the structures on, on, on the street, if I can get to it here. I mean, as you look up and down the street, on Morning Street, all of the houses are close to the street, and this one, they made, they made them put it back in order to approve the variance, which I, of course, you know, I don't want to be a Monday morning quarterback, but it just seems like that was really the wrong thing to do. And so, you know, in order to get a structure of any kind, they had to abide by the board's conditions, and that's what they came up with, I guess. Having said that, one of the questions that Nancy and I talked about a little bit, as did we with Jeff, I believe, is, what is the primary frontage? Because with the new Higgins Beach character code, you have a primary frontage, and you have a secondary frontage on a corner lot. And that really, I guess, could be determined by the applicant themselves, if they wanted to designate a primary and a secondary frontage. I felt that because of the code's requirement that a secondary frontage be twelve to twenty-one feet from the street, they meet that secondary frontage on Greenwood, but they don't on Morning. And since their address is on Morning Street, the driveway is on Morning Street, my opinion, and it's just my opinion, is that Morning Street provides the primary frontage for the house, which they can't, they don't meet and can't meet, but they do meet the secondary frontage. So it really just leaves them with the Greenwood, excuse me, with the rear of the house, which has to be thirty feet, and that would be the back property line opposite the Morning Street property line. They can't meet that one because they're, because of the placement of the house and how the board, apparently, the Board of Appeals had them place the house back in nineteen ninety. And they, but they do meet the setback between themselves and number thirty-eight Morning Street. So that, that side setback is fine, as Nancy went through. So the least amount of nonconformance, I think, comes if you designate Morning Street as your primary frontage. As Nancy described, the issue is that, then, to do any expansion, if you could imagine just for a minute, if the house was placed eighteen to twenty-one feet from Morning Street, okay, then the sunroom addition or any kind of addition would happen to the rear of the property where the structure now exists, still leaving a thirty-foot setback. So it's almost like a reverse, I think what they're, what they're proposing to do, you could almost look at it as a reversed rear addition. And they're flopping it over and they're putting it on the front because of the placement of the structure. There isn't any way that this house really meets a lot of, any of the standards that are in the character-based code. The roof design isn't really a character-based element, there's no gambrel roof, roof pitch requirements or anything, gambrel is not even mentioned in, in the character-based code. There's no way they can really put a front porch on the structure, well, I shouldn't say that. They could put a front porch on the structure, but they'd still need to come for a variance for that. What they're proposing doesn't really, doesn't really look like a front porch to me, so it doesn't really act like a front porch, it doesn't behave like a front porch, it behaves more like a rear addition. To be a true rear addition on the front of the house, it would have to be inset from both corners of the house and not just one corner. So there's some character-based elements we'd need to talk about with just exactly what is this addition, but there are some other subcomponents there that do seem to be pretty, do seem to mirror pretty closely the standards in the character-based code. But number one is the canopy entrance, if I can get to it here. The canopy entrance that you see right here, if you're looking at my cursor moving around, that, that could be a character-based element, it's actually a stoop with a canopy over it. And then the roof, what I believe they refer to as a roof deck, we would actually call a balcony. It meets our definition of a balcony, and I think that would meet the character-based code requirements as well. So when we run into, if you remember the case of the forty-eight Bayview property that was a little fifty-by-fifty lot with a very plain cottage-style home on it, there really wasn't any way they could meet all the character-based codes, but they kind of hinted at a lot of them. And this is kind of one of those situations where you, you take what you can get and try to make, make it meet the character-based elements if you can. It's a long-winded explanation or narrative that I just gave you, but what I'm getting at, or trying to get to, is that the board's duty, I think, tonight is to simply go through the criteria for the practical difficulty variance and look at this as an addition of some kind. We don't really know how, what to categorize it as, but it isn't an addition. And in order to do the addition, the only place they can do it logically is where they're proposing to do it. Similarly to the last appeal that you just heard, it, it's an allowed or permitted use to do that in this district, if it meets the character-based standards, and there, and there are going to be instances where existing buildings cannot do that because of their prior placement on the lot. It's unrealistic. Well, I guess, I shouldn't say that, it's the board's decision to say, is it infeasible for them to pick this building up and move it, leaving behind a perfectly good crawl space foundation that was just poured in nineteen ninety? Do you just abandon that and bring it forward and do this in a compliant way? Is that a feasible alternative, or do you allow them to add four more feet of framing to the foundation and elevate the house and then just put this addition on it where it currently exists? So the board's probably just focused on the dimensional relief that's being requested, but with an eye and maybe even placing condition that if, if the board should so grant this relief, that the applicant would still be beholden to try to meet the character-based code as far as the design element to the house to the greatest extent possible. It's going to be almost impossible to meet them a hundred percent. But that's not your job to determine that, it's your job to determine if the dimensional relief makes sense, and if you can approve that, if it meets the criteria in the practical difficulty variance.
And you're, what we're dealing, I mean, your office would deal with-
We deal with the rest-
With the characters?
Yeah, the character-based stuff. Because there, I mean, there are discussion points here that I won't get into in great detail, but there's things such as fenestration, there's things such as the setbacks in the corner, if we're going to consider it sort of a reverse rear addition, there's all these talking points that we, we can work with the applicant on and come to some, some kind of an agreement on them. If it, if it sort of gets to the code, but maybe doesn't get there a hundred percent, we have some leeway to do that through our administrative review. It's not, I don't think it's fair to put the board in a situation of trying to weigh all that stuff out. I think simply looking at the practical difficulty variance from a dimensional perspective is the best way to go. Should you feel it doesn't meet those criteria, obviously, you can't grant the variance. If you do grant the variance, then we'll deal with the, the character-based code elements.
That makes, thank you very much for that clarity. Is, is, in the extra space, does that cause any problems with, doesn't look like a way, but just to clarify, that's not an issue regarding coverage, lot coverage or-
Uh, no. No, it's not, because one of the reasons, it's, it's almost a given, if they come for a practical difficulty variance, they aren't under any of the Shoreland zoning regulations for lot coverage, and they aren't in any, they're not in a floodplain, they're simply elevating to get a basement, a full-size basement. So if, if they weren't doing a practical difficulty variance, then there's probably a reason for that, and it's likely that there's Shoreland implications or some other constraints on the lot that, yeah, we'd, we'd have to look at those elements. Right now, it's the dimensional standards of the building, and just for the board's information, the existing size of the structure with the proposed addition, whatever you want to call it, but that the building addition, does not exceed what could normally be permitted without any board action, if it were reversed and the, the building were located in a compliant position on the lot. So it, it doesn't exceed the lengths or the widths or any of those dimensional standards that are in the character-based code.
And is this a two-story unit right now, or is that an-
That's a great question. I had to look at that a little bit today because of the definitions in the character-based code. If there is five feet of wall above grade, then the basement would then become a story. And this, I think, fits the, the house charac, the house style, it's the house style, not the cottage style or the bungalow style. So it's a house style, the house style allows two and a half stories. The definition of a half-story is that the, it's the, the half-story is the space under the roof framing. Because it's a gambrel style, it doesn't really matter if it's gambrel or not, the roof framing would have to meet the wall at no more than two feet above the, the floor area, or the, so, so if you look at the gambrel roof, it basically comes down and connects at the top of the second floor, or would be the, the first full floor above grade. So it meets the definition of two and a half stories. The only thing I don't have, and I think this is a good point, maybe Nancy can answer or the appellant can answer it, we don't have a, we don't have a designated total height, proposed height of the structure, which we probably need to talk about. We know that you want to add four feet to it, but we don't know what it is now, we don't know what it'll be at the, at- I had to look at that a little bit today because of the definitions in the character-based code. If there is five feet of wall above grade, then the basement would then become a story. And this, I think, fits the, the, the house charac- the house sty- it's the house style, not the cottage style or the bungalow style. So it's a house style. The house style allows two and a half stories. The definition of a half-story is that the, it's the, the half-story is the space under the roof framing. Because it's a gambrel style, um, it doesn't really matter if it's gambrel or not, the roof framing would have to meet, um, the wall at no more than two feet above the, uh, the floor area or the, so, so if you look at the gambrel roof, it basically comes down and connects at the top of the second floor or would be the, the first full floor above grade. So it meets the definition of two and a half stories. The only thing I don't have, and I think this is a good point, maybe Nancy can answer or the appellant can answer it, we don't have a, we don't have a designated total height, proposed height of the structure, which we probably need to talk about. We know that you wanna add four feet to it, but we don't know what it is now. We don't know what it'll be at the, at, at the end after everything's done.
And just to clarify, the steps aren't in the equation because that's allowed in the new rules.
Right. And the other thing I'm not 100% sure of, because it wasn't dimensioned on the plan, is, is, is it, is there five feet above grade? We know you're adding four feet. If you look at the section, it shows four feet from the top of the wall. I could actually enlarge that a little bit for- So down here, you see the, the section through the home, they're, they're showing a four-foot increase from the top of the wall to the bottom of the first floor framing. But we don't know what this dimension is from the finished floor of the first floor flame, framing down to grade. If that dimension is, is five feet or more, then it is, this basement is considered a story, so it becomes one of the, one of the, uh, two and a half stories that they're allowed. If it weren't five feet, if it was only three feet, this basement would actually be free for them. They wouldn't, it wouldn't count towards the two and a half stories.
But at this point, still, even if it was counted, it doesn't matter because they meet the two and a half?
Correct. That's correct.
From my, what's my view, is five feet irrelevant?
It's irrelevant, except we just don't know if it counts or not, but it's, it's good either way. Yeah.
Clarify that. Did you ever take the microphone stationing? We just can't hear over, over the, um-
Jeff McKenzie from Rosvera's. To clarify, uh, your question, are you asking if the floor down through the joists to the top of the new plate, you want that dimension?
That one's not as, that one's not as important as the total height of the building because we don't, that's not dimensioned and we don't know what the total height of the building's gonna be. I'd rather know that one. I'm not so concerned about, as we just said, I think that's gonna be counted as a story because it looks like it's more than five feet. It's just not dimensioned. But it doesn't matter. What does matter is the height of the building.
If we add the four feet as proposed?
Yeah.
I came up with 24.3 feet.
Okay. Excuse me. You're allowed 35. We just wanna make sure you're under there and it's not dimensioned. I was pretty sure it was under it, but again, I couldn't scale it because graciously I got a, I got this wonderfully large plan here that, when it's reduced, the scale doesn't work on it anymore. I'm sure that was a Rosvera cost-cutting measure. But, but anyway, I couldn't scale it, Jeff, what I was getting at. So it, without a dimension on there, I couldn't, I had no idea, but I'm guessing it's well under 35. So that's, those were only the, the points that I could find in there. Again, I'm, I've taken up way too much time, so I'll get back to that.
This is, this saves us a lot of time in the long run, so thank you. All right. So why don't we go through the, uh, requirements? See if that's okay?
Sure.
Yeah, new variances due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood?
Uh, so our responses are paraphrased from our very extensive letter, but hopefully it will, uh, will provide enough information coupled with the prior review of the letter. So the site is unique and challenged due to the lot's limited dimensions and overall geometry, along with the fact that it's a corner lot. The location of the existing cottage on the westerly end of the lot, built under a 1989 variance, is unique compared to the lots in the vicinity and is further away from Mourning Street. With the new municipal CR1 zoning, the site now has a 30-foot quote-unquote rear yard setback along the westerly sideline. This was formerly 15 feet. Yet this was the spot that the cottage was constructed under the prior variance. The corner lot now includes two minimum and maximum front yard setbacks. Given the location of the cottage, it's not practicable to meet the maximum standards. And the cross-reference to the cover letter, as we mentioned, has a lot more information about that.
Okay. And the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or the fair market value of the budding property.
The use of the property as the applicant's permanent residence in their retirement will not change the character of the neighborhood, as the area is surrounded by single-family residences and seasonal cottages. The proposed changes are expected to increase the property value of the site by constructing a full basement area beneath the existing cottage rather than a crawl space. The addition of a new sunroom and deck will add new building elements that are very common in this neighborhood and are an extremely desirable amenity in this coastal area. These improvements are expected to increase the overall value of this property and those on the surrounding area.
And practical difficulties not resolved in action taken by the applicant or the prior owner?
The recent rezoning of the area to CR1 has changed the required setbacks. The new setbacks place approximately half of the existing cottage within the quote rear yard along the westerly property line. The new ordinance standards also include a maximum primary front yard setback as well as a minimum setback. The existing cottage is in excess of the maximum allowable setbacks from Mourning Street. Any work to this cottage requires a practical difficulty variance to address the setback issues on both ends of the property. Had the municipal ordinance changes not occurred in 2015, the proposed building addition and renovations could have been completed with no need to expand upon the restrictions, reductions previously permitted with the 1989 variance. These ordinance changes, which necessitate this practical difficulty variance, were not conducted by the applicant or their ancestors.
And no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance?
The new rear setback crosses roughly through the midpoint of the existing cottage. The distance between Mourning Street and the existing cottage far exceeds the requisite maximum primary front yard setback. These issues apply to the existing cottage regardless of whether any renovations or additions occur. In order to comply with a 30-foot rear yard setback on the westerly end of the site, approximately half of the existing cottage would need to be removed in its entirety. This would result in a significant loss of the existing cottage and would not be feasible or practicable. In order to comply with a maximum 21-foot setback from Mourning Street, an addition in excess of approximately 34 feet in width would be necessary to address the maximum primary front setback. This would more than double the existing width of the cottage and would not be feasible. The cost of this scale of an addition would far exceed the expected cost of the proposed 12 by 22 sunroom additions.
And the granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with the surrounding properties?
The home is to the west of the property, the home to the west of the property is approximately the same distance from Greenwood Avenue as the applicant's existing cottage. Using the GIS database, the residence to the south appears to be approximately 24 feet from Mourning Street. With the proposed renovations, the setbacks along the westerly and southerly property, property limits will not change. The proposed sunroom addition will bring the front wall closer to Mourning Street. Although the residence is located outside of the maximum primary front setback, the proposed addition will bring the home more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties.
And the granting of the variance will not have an adverse effect on the natural environment?
The lot is an existing developed residential property with town streets on two sides and an additional residential lots on the remaining sides. The site is not located with any, within any identified sensitive natural areas. It's not located within or adjacent to any protected back dunes or frontal zones, erosion hazard areas, flood hazard zones, or other protected natural areas. The proposed renovations to raise the cottage will not increase the overall footprint of the existing cottage. The proposed addition of a sunroom will affect an approximately 264 square foot portion of the lot. A portion of the proposed expansion area is currently a paved walk with a remaining area grass. The area outside of the expansion, with the exception of the driveways, will remain a lawn area. The granting of the variance is not expected to have an unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment.
And you're not in flood zone?
Property's not in, within a special flood hazard zone as shown in the firm map.
Thank you. Um, we have one letter in phone calls, I'll read this letter, it's the record.
Uh, this is, uh, from, sorry. Thank you. It's from Kathleen Houhanen, 76 Patriots Road, Morris Plains, New Jersey. And it reads as follows. Dear Tom, several days ago, we received a notification from the Scavo zoning board that your petition for a variance would be heard this coming Wednesday evening of November 9th. As co-owners of the adjacent property at night 38 Mourning Street, my brother Thomas Hou and I discussed the proposal. We don't wish to oppose your plans, but we do have concerns about the project's potential impact on our property. It appears from the diagram provided in the zoning board that the original structure built in 91 and 92 is less than nine feet from our property line. The addition to the structure will maintain that small nine-foot variance from the line, unlike the original structure. However, it will diminish the privacy we, uh, have, here to four, add in our kitchen and bedroom areas because your proposed sunroom will be directly adjacent. We have more than adjoining properties, uh, I'm sorry. We have more than adjoining properties at Higgins Beach in common. Our common ancestors settled at Higgins Beach as some of the first renters, quote-unquote, of Mr. Higgins' land more than 125 years ago. We were very fond of your late father and enjoyed getting to know you, you know, a little last summer. So we are your relatives as well as your neighbors. All we ask is that you be aware of our privacy concerns so that you and your wife are able to enjoy a nice summer without it having negative impacts to our quality of life. We ask that you respect our common privacy needs by making sure that the new structure does not approach further on the common property line. And we would like to discuss planning a privacy hedge of some, some kind on the property line that will provide both a line of demarcation and some privacy between the two properties. We would, of course, share the cost of the planning. I am sending out a copy of the email to Brian Longstaff at Scavo zoning board so that our concerns are expressed in some form before the zoning board meeting, uh, of your hearing. With all good wishes, Kathy. It's from Thomas Hou and Kathy Houhanen. And Thomas Hou is 310 Williams, Williams Salisbury Drive in, uh, down in Pennsylvania. And Kathy Houhanen from 76 Patriots Road, Morris Plains, New Jersey.
And why don't I open the public hearing? Anybody wish to speak on this subject from the public? Seeing nobody from the public wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing part of the meeting. Come back to the, uh, board with questions or comments.
Has, uh, has anyone approached the neighbors who have this, these concerns to, to see what might be done there to alleviate any, any privacy issues?
Uh, until tonight, I wasn't aware of the letters, so, um, have you had any discussions? Not at this point.
I guess the easiest answer to that question would be is, are there windows on that side of the property, uh, of the, of the building?
I see that there are.
We're not encroaching, is it? I agree, I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to address their concerns because the neighbors, a little longer. Um, the side there, we're not encroaching any more than nine feet, staying with that window, so it's going straight down. Uh, the windows themselves, um, I don't know what they have, how they have, feels about that, uh, whether or not they are interested at all in not putting the windows in or not. I'm assuming that you've received the letter earlier and have thought about it at least. If you'd like to take the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, if I could also point out, um, with the zoning criteria that is currently in place, the existing building and the proposed addition would not be in the setback along that side property line. It was only in the setback in the original variance. With the rezoning that happened in 2015, there's an eight-foot side yard requirement for all the lots in this district and we are outside of that, even with the addition.
Thanks for clarifying. And I'm not saying that I'm looking for this answer, I'm just trying to get a feel of where we're at.
Uh, Tom Rhodes from Portland, uh, the applicant. Obviously, no, I have not discussed it or thought about, uh, not putting a window in there. That is the southerly side of the house, so you do have a lot of sun coming in that area. Um, I would be hesitant to, to not put a window in there just because of the fact of the sunlight. There is massive trees there, um, so there is a lot of shade in the area too as well. So I wouldn't mind keeping the window there and, and having the light. I have discussed, um, with her this summer of putting a small hedge up. So that was her idea. Uh, there was a lot of growth in there. I've taken a lot of the growth out. And, um, you know, she said, can we put a little small fence in and a little hedge, a little fence in there? And I said, yeah, no problem at all, we can do with that. But I'm, you know, I, depending on the situation, I'm not opposed to, to helping her out and meeting her needs.
Have you had any contacts with her since the letter?
No, I have not, no. Matter of fact, I just, I just got the letter on Monday on my email. I just opened it up this morning, so.
Maybe a phone call.
Phone call.
Uh, your call, but that's just my, my advice.
And I'd like to note, as well as the applicant is willing to work with the neighbor to, you know, smooth over any issues that the neighbor has, almost coordinating a planting or, um, something like that, so I think that's good to note.
So the board members' comments. Why don't I put in the, the practical difficulty comments on here? The case for the strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property, for which the variance is sought, would both preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone and which is located, and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant, but also apply here, is that correct?
Yes.
So that needs to weigh in a deliberation. Phil, please jump in, we need comments or questions.
No, no other, no other questions.
The envelope now, I'm a little confused about the new envelope versus the old envelope. The, the new envelope is eight feet side, is that right?
The principal structure can be as close as eight feet on a side setback.
But we've got, because we've got a-
Because you've got two frontages in the character-based code now.
And I agree, you're, you're, to me, the address where the mail is delivered is the front. That would be seem logical.
It, it only seems logical to me because it, then, i- if you, if you chose Greenwood Avenue as the primary frontage, you don't meet it there because you're only 14 feet from the right way and you don't meet it on the Mourning Street side because you're still, you've still got that problem. So now you've created two non-conformances and you have a rear setback problem as well. So you've got three non-conformances, whereas if you choose Mourning Street, you decide with the, with the driveway and the address, that and the rear are the only two. You've narrowed it down to two non-conformances. And that's why, to me, it makes more sense to, to go with the Mourning Street side. Again, it's, if you look at the, if you look at the, um, the building, um, if I can Google Earth here, you, you could make a case that, if I can get out there on Greenwood Street, you can make a case that that looks like it could be a front, you know, of a building. But it's, it's kinda hidden by trees and it's clearly, I, I would guess that the, you don't use that as the main entrance to the house very much, so it just doesn't make, to me, make a lot of sense to call it. So there's two, right now, if you call Mourning Street the primary frontage, there's two non-conformances. The eight-foot setback is being met on that line between 38 and 40 Mourning Street, the bottom, the bottom property line on your sheet. That one's being met. This one is not being met because there's a 30-foot rear setback.
But they're asking here, just, we need to do this just because they're going up?
That's the only reason that we're adding that in is because they're elevating by more than a foot the structure. And our policy is if you elevate by more than a foot, unless it's for floodplain requirements, then you're, you're increasing the non-conform, non-conforming, non-conforming aspect of the building by elevating it vertically. And so the, you kinda gotta throw that- And so you've kind of got to throw that in there. Right now, again, the front setback is being met, this one is not, this one is, and this one is not, so.
And this side here where the road is, it's a secondary, how many feet off does that have to be that we...
It can be a range of twelve to twenty-one, so it allows you to get closer to the secondary street.
So they're in that envelope?
Yeah, they're nicely in the envelope that way. It's the rear setback and the front setback on Morning Street that are the two that they're not meeting. In the old envelope, it was a thirty-foot front setback and fifteen-feet side and rear, and so they had a thirty-foot on Greenwood and a thirty-foot on Morning, which they couldn't meet because of the lot size at the time and the setbacks at the time.
Nancy, the twelve feet that's coming out, does that get to the back of the house that's beside them that we're talking about? Does that get all the way back there? It seems like it's a larger spread than...
I think that house is still forward of that.
So it's still forward?
The back stoop.
Okay, it is to the back stoop of the house, okay. And you have to be above them, is that a single story home or is that a two-straight home? Both style, bedroom upstairs. Let's go through each one of these requirements in the void. The general need for the variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood. And the volunteers, who would like to start?
I mean, I think Brian went into pretty good detail about the situation that the town kind of put them in, and where they situated their house and why they're here today.
Okay, well, we just can see right somewhere.
I concur, Karen. I mean, the notes that Brian was mentioning regarding the variance that was given in nineteen eighty-nine sort of put them in this position so that they're kind of stuck where they are now, and they need to have a variance because of where the location of the house was constructed.
It's clearly a unique property, but I think a lot of that uniqueness does come from the prior zoning board placing it, placing their building where it is currently. So it certainly wasn't the fault of the property owners.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts. It seems like the zoning board created part of this issue with what we're looking at now.
How was the zoning board at that point? She's been here since... I agree.
She's been here since there was one.
Uh, the need...
He was, he actually, just doesn't remember.
The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood, I think is obviously true. So all in favor that number one is met? unanimous? Number two, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonable detrimental effect to the use or the fair market value of the abiding properties.
I mean, I think this is consistent with the applications we're seeing for Higgins Beach, the improvements of the property, making them more year-round and livable, and, I mean, it's just going to increase the value of the property and the surrounding properties as well.
Right, they're adding new features and elements to the building, like the sunroom and the deck, that like, as was stated in the application, are very common to the other houses in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think even though there isn't anything regarding gambrel roofs in the ordinance down there, I think that the new addition that they're looking to put on does follow the standards that we're looking for, and that makes it a little bit more conforming, and it gets it closer to that setback, the maximum setback that we're looking for.
I don't see any undesirable change, it makes it more conforming with what's down there, and it's, I mean, you have a variety of different houses.
So the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonable detrimental effect on either the use of the fair market value of abiding properties. I think you can make an argument for privacy issues, but there is, the challenge with that is, when you live down there, I don't think there's any privacy that's awfully close to Menlo Way, even if it's sixteen feet or eight or whatever, it's going to be close, and I'm glad that it's behind, it doesn't meet the side of the house, I'm fine with that. All in favor of two being met? Yes. Practical difficulty is not the result in action taken by the applicant or prior owner?
I think we've discussed if that ranks, no, it's not.
It was a result of the ZVA in nineteen eighty-nine.
Yeah, the regulations and everything was different back then when the current zoning board had to deal with this issue, so it was just a situation at the time.
Yeah, I don't see it was anything from the current prior owner.
Practical difficulty is not a result in action taken by the applicant or prior owner. I will defend our previous, the ancestors of the zoning board, and say they were very wise in where they put it, based on the information they had at the time, and I'm in defense for them and the rest of the board, so all in favor of this.
I just want to go on record, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't criticizing the former...
You're okay, it's all the others. No other side you. And no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance. Mr. Chairman, continue with you.
Yeah, I was going to say, because of the constraints of the law, I mean, you're basically using the only space they have there.
Right, and anything else they would like to try there, as mentioned earlier, would result in, you know, a significant economic injury to themselves to try to do something else, so necessarily it's their only option, if this is what they want to go forward with.
Yeah, I have to agree, there are other alternatives, but they would clearly have some economic issues with that.
No, this is one I would say no on, but Mr. Longstaff pointed out, there is a feasible alternative, but due to the neighbors' request for privacy, that in a way supersedes the feasible alternative because it was brought forward to be more into what the neighbors would see and less privacy for them, so I think that probably makes it a little bit more on the level of no feasible alternative being available. And, I mean, we don't look at it, I don't think, generally for monetary anyways, so that wouldn't be an issue for me. I wouldn't be looking at it monetary-wise. If there was a feasible alternative, I would say it wouldn't meet it other than the neighbor with some concerns about privacy, that's the only thing that would allow me to say yes to this.
And so no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance? I agree with the board, I don't see, there are other alternatives, but they keep the envelope, it seems reasonable that that would be acceptable.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add, although the neighbors may express concerns over privacy, privacy is not a requirement, there's no standard for privacy. All of the houses, in fact, they're just as close to the next house down as this house would be to them, so I don't get the privacy thing, I understand, it's a concern, but I don't think the board should tread into that area as making that a justification for no feasible alternative. The board certainly is within its rights to say, listen, if you want to put that addition on, you pick the house up, you pour a new foundation in a compliant manner, and you plunk the new house and its addition on there, and instead of the sunroom, you put a porch on there like what's required on all the other, you could say that, you could, that could be your position. The question is, is that financially feasible? Is that posing a financial hardship? According to the definition that says would both preclude a use of the property and would also result in significant economic injury, so that's the question. Is making this compliant significant economic injury to the applicant? That's the question you need to ask. Don't bother yourselves with the privacy thing, because you'll never win that battle anyway, it's a loss.
Now, it's always one of those things to me, it's just a relationship thing as opposed to a reality thing, and it doesn't, it meets it, so I feel comfortable with number four, no feasible alternative, all in favor? The granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties?
I think as we've discussed, a lot of the houses in that neighborhood are closer to the street, and so it'll be bringing it closer to the street and conformity with the new zoning laws as well.
I agree, I mean, it's stated and shown on the drawing that the proposed addition will bring the home more into conformance with surrounding properties.
I would have to agree with the comments previously.
Yeah, I mean, raising it up, a lot of the homes that have come before us, they're either raising it up to put it for flood if they're close to the water, or they're putting basements underneath them, so we've seen a lot of these coming that way, so I would agree.
So the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties? I look at it as kind of a shallow question, to be candid, in most cases, and here, it doesn't, whether it does or doesn't, it doesn't hurt it, so I'm fine with it. So number five, all in favor? Are you unanimous? Number six, the granting of the variance will not have an unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment?
I think so.
No. No, they're not, they're not really going to be having a lot more impervious area there, so, no, I don't see any issues there.
No, and I think there's been discussion between the neighbor and the applicant for putting a barrier in there anyways, even adding to the natural environment.
Nancy, you've done the studies on the salamanders, the spotted salamanders, and the owls that dig in the ground, that have been correctly studied, and also rabbits?
Not on this site, sir.
I agree, sorry, couldn't raise my hand. I think it does, there's no reasonable effect on the natural environment. All in favor? Are you unanimous? We know that it's not in the flood zone, the last question to be met, probably the highest one, is a case where the strict application of dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which the variances are, would both preclude the use of the property which is permitted in the zone and which is located, and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant. Mr. Chairman?
Well, I mean, I think we discussed the idea, I mean, to conform would be to move the house, and that's not economically feasible or reasonable for us to ask the applicant to do that.
I agree.
I would agree with that as well.
Yes, I would agree.
And in the same place as the practical difficulty, all in favor of that being unanimous? So as far as the board is concerned, anybody have any other questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to approve as submitted.
Second, discussions on motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd want to condition that upon the applicant's meeting, character-based component standards.
That's really the point, would you amend your motion to...
Sure.
Subject to the approval of the CEO?
Sure, that would be subject to the approval of the CEO, and I think if there are any questions on that, you can certainly get together with the CEO, and he'll help you out with that.
And that typically, he likes robin egg blue for the roots, so. Would that meant to change the approval of the... Yeah, let me first say, the motion on the amendment to the, what was the original motion? So basically, I'm looking for approval for the, yeah, I move to approve the amendment in the state of Mrs. Stark. Thank you. And I need a second.
A second, Matt.
Fine.
Okay, so based on the new motion, all in favor? Are you unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great answer. Okay, Mr. Longstaff, any to add to...
Nope. I don't, we have, I think as you discussed, we have a carryover from a tabled application that will be heard in December, and we'll also have, we had a third application that came in that was a miscellaneous appeal for an expansion of a non-conforming use. If you recall, that requires planning board advisory opinion. The planning board's schedule did not coincide with our schedule, because they're on a three-week schedule instead of us, and so the applicant couldn't meet their deadline for submittal, so she'll be going to the planning board in December prior to coming here. So there'll be two that we know of for next month, but there may be more.
Okay. Any other comments from the board members?
I have a comment. Unfortunately, I will not be in attendance at next month's board meeting. I have conflict with my work.
And I'm not certain that I'll be here either. That's important to know, so we'll need for, just for the record for anybody that's listening for about December's meeting, there may not be enough to have a quorum at that meeting. If there is, we'll reschedule best we can, so. We don't know about the other two members.
Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
That's a, yeah, very good point, Thanksgiving. I'd like to bring up something that I think is really important, and it's been, I'm looking, as this is the bully pulpit, to be candid with you, I'm going to ask the board to kind of hear what this issue is, and also, we as a town have no ability to manage it, and I find it offensive, to be candid with you, regarding the issue, I think it's up to you to deal. Back in two thousand, the town decided to help people that could not afford to have homes or wanted to take loved ones in and have an efficiency apartment, or whatever you want to call it, in-law apartment, to be allowed for two reasons, wanted to get the ones that were illegal out from under the shade and be visible, and because there were some sort of dangerous situations, especially down in Pine Point area, and also to allow for people in an environment where it is very difficult, and we keep on talking, the rhetoric is over and over again of affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing, and in my opinion, it is rhetoric rather than true. You probably sense a little bit of my frustration, and the reason why is because I wrote that ordinance, and it's been changed over the years, and never has it been known that the, or at least brought to my attention, and certainly in the other planning, the town councils I've asked, that the sewer district charges a three-thousand-dollar fee for the addition of a, at the time, six-hundred-foot efficiency apartment. It's since been changed as to the size as it could be, but if you're on a sewer district and they charge a monthly increase, and see they treat it like a second home, even though we specifically designed it, I'm sorry, as a two-unit, even though we specifically at the time designed it as a non-two-unit, it was never intended to be a two-unit, it shouldn't have been treated as a two-unit, in my opinion, I am very, very frustrated by the fact that the sewer district made the decision without going to the town, when the full intent was to make this affordability for the community and to make people come out from under the secrecy of these apartments, and I feel that's a violation of what town council intended, it's certainly a violation of what I did. I'm doing a, the way I found out was I'm doing an expansion on my home. The planning department, the zoning department, the fees that are involved are minimal, the work to get it approved has been minimal, has been nothing but professional, has been nothing but proper, and the people have been working with me on the project, know the town's rules, and have been fantastic. I got a phone call from the board's management office saying, by the way, don't forget you need to go to the sewer district, which, to be honest with you, I just didn't know. I did, and it was informed that if I took the kitchen out, I wouldn't have to pay the exorbitant three-thousand-dollar fee. Now, three-thousand dollars to me, I can survive three-thousand dollars, so it's not about me. And then, on top of that, though, there's an increased monthly fee that goes along with it, so it's not just a three-thousand-dollar fee, it's on top of it. And what shocked me was that, oh, yeah, you can lower that if you get rid of the kitchen, and I'm sitting there, and it's an efficiency apartment, what in the world does a kitchen have to do with three-thousand dollars of fees? When, if you want to make the argument for the bedroom, you have a legitimate debate, but for a kitchen, which...
It's a house.
And their argument is that it's a second unit, which is clearly in the ordinance not a two-unit, it's an efficiency apartment.
What's the fee without the, without the kitchen?
You know, well, the answer I got... You know, I, well, the answer I got at the time, I was a little bit surprised and the person that told me about this was not a representative of the board, it was somebody that was really just stating, it wasn't a person that I want to put under the gun because that person's role wasn't in that authority. And they go back to me with how it works and why it works. And the town has, has, has no ability to manage this organization. We just voted two members yesterday. But we have no ability to manage them other than that vote. Their meetings are public, they are on TV, but most people don't hear about it. They, county can't do anything, planning board can't do anything, zoning board can't do anything. They are an independent agency that has total control over their budget, how they manage things and what they charge. We have more control over what happens with the county than we do with our own sewer district. And not that I'm angry at any of the sewer district members, but I am extremely concerned that we sit here and we talk about affordable housing and keeping communities and families together and we consistently do the exact opposite. And this is a classic example. It may only be $3,000 to somebody that makes good income and they don't care. But to me, and then to have the reason be that the kitchen or a kitchenette, most cases, these things are nothing more than a tiny refrigerator cabinet, a two-burner stove and a dishwasher which uses less water than a sink would. And I, I find that, that needs, I believe that needs to be addressed. And the only way I can get that out in the public is here because there is no other format. So I'm stating that on the record as, as I pointed out of the bully pulpit. And I would hope that others agree with me and make a phone call to the sewer district. And I hope they're as disgusted as I am because I really believed in that ordinance. And I've been told by the people at sewer district that once they find out that they have to pay this $3,000 fee and additional quarterly fees, they choose not to do. The statement that was made to me was many of them choose not to continue with the process. Now, I don't know what that means.
So they don't offer any sort of alternative, like, you know, come before the board, I can't pay $3,000 hardship, sort of?
Nope, it's the rule, get over it, deal with it. And I have...
My feeling is that probably there are a number of people that continue with the work, but just tell them that...
I agree.
That may be the case also. And, you know, I told the truth. I paid my $3,000 and now I'm making a lot of noise about my $3,000. It isn't my $3,000, I do not care about the money. I care about the principle of we speak one language in this town and that's a direct, a direct insult for what that ordinance was built for. And that's my point. I would hope that all of the board would make a phone call and not ask them to do that. But I think that the community needs to stand up and say, if you really believe in affordable housing, then allow affordable housing to be in this town.
What about the housing authority? We have, does the government have a housing authority? I was on that board.
They do not have any jurisdiction over what the sewer district does. The sewer district has total control over what it does.
But they should be working with them more if this is an issue, if they're the ones proposing affordable housing, because that's what they were doing back when I was on it way back when. And, you know, and then, you know...
The challenge is if you don't know what happens.
Right.
They have to put that in place after we put that rule in.
Is there a breakdown of that $3,000 for what it's for? Is it justified?
Its argument is that you need to be able to have capacity for future growth. Well, again, I'd argue a bedroom would make that argument, but a kitchen and sink doesn't seem to meet that standard. But the arbitrary rule is, they seem to have decided that what we have declared as, well, as a town council, when I was on the town council, declared was not a second unit, but rather an efficiency unit, and we defined it differently intentionally. They seem to have defined it as a second unit and has charged appropriately.
I mean, to be devil's advocate, I mean, it's capacity, it's how many people are using their system. So I mean, they're just thinking, you know, efficiency or non-efficiency, you're adding two people to our system living in your house that are now going to be contributing and using it every day.
But I, and I can understand the, the $3,000 if there weren't additional fees going along with it. By the way, if you're paying additionally for, for the monthly fees as well, that should cover the additional.
And you're tapping into the same system as others if you're tapping into the new one. And the fact is, in my case, I have a four-bedroom home, it's not going to be a five-bedroom home. If you wanted to argue the case, if the argument was that the bedroom is the trigger, we'd have something different to talk about. If the argument isn't that the bedroom is the trigger, the argument is that the kitchen is the trigger, which makes, it comes back to the issue that they're treating it as a two-unit as opposed to a single unit. So there you go. I hope I, I hope I offended some people and I hope I upset some people because I hope people make some phone calls because I think it's dead wrong. And if that's, anybody else wish to make any other comments? Still 3 a.m.
We'll give you a variance.
Come now. What's that?
We'll give you a variance.
So there you go, a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Thank you for my, along my slow.